All right, supervisor, I think we're too after. I think we can go ahead and get started and it is being recorded.
Very good. Well, thank you so much, Troy. And hello, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to tonight's presentation of the Major T Renewal Program that will be on the ballot in November. We're here to present tonight to give you information in regards to what Major T is all about. Like, when did we start a half-cent sales tax measure for transportation? How many years have we had it? What is it for? Is it going to cost us more money? Is it going to cost us less money? What are the things that we can do with this measure that we could not do without it? So we're going to be making that presentation and then offering up answers, opening it up for Q and A afterwards. I'm joined this evening with members, stakeholders of Madera County Transportation Commission. We have Georgina Vivian with us. I have Supervisor David Rogers from District 2. We have Ellen Bitter from the City of Madera. And also Jared Carter from County Madera. And we have Jason Rogers from the City of Chachilla. So we have great representation here this evening. And Troy McNeil from Madera County Transportation Commission is coordinating the recording and ensuring that the technicalities of this evening go smoothly. So with that, I would like to turn the discussion and over to our Executive Director of the Madera County Transportation Commission, Tricia Taylor. Tricia, would you educate us about what is Major T all about?
Good evening, everyone. With me today in the presentation will be Georgina Vivian. She's the President of VRPA Technologies. And so as Supervisor Poitras mentioned, we will pick it off with kind of just giving you a brief update about Measure T. So Measure T is a half-cent sales tax for transportation improvements in the Madera County area. And what's unique and great about this half-cent sales tax is it's collected locally and it stays local. So that means it cannot go anywhere else besides Madera County. So it will not be going to any counties to the north or south of us or anywhere else in the state. So Georgina, will you be sharing the slide presentation?
Yes, I just need Troy to let me share my screen.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Give me one second, Georgina, and I'll lay here to do that.
Okay. There we go. Okay, Tricia.
Okay, so for the next slide, please. Today's presentation overview will give you, just like Supervisor Poitras mentioned, the history of Measure A and Measure T, the renewal, and where we're going from here and the highlights moving forward. Next slide, please. To give you a little bit of information about our region, Madera County, you know, it's a smaller county, rural county, population of about 160,000. We have a lot of miles that we need to cover when it comes to transportation improvements. There's 2,150 square miles. We expect the population by year 2046 to be around 207,000. In the Madera Incorporated cities, the cities of Chachilla and the city of Chachilla, I mean, and Madera, the population for Chachilla is 19,000 and Madera is about 67,000. And in the unincorporated areas, it's about 72,000 and making up about 46% of the population. But we also need to work with a lot of other smaller communities. In La Vina and Fermi, we have disadvantaged communities making up of a population of a little bit over about 2,500. And in the Oakhurst and the Mountain Community Areas, there is a population of approximately 14,000. And in the Rancho, it's about approximately 9,000. So there's a lot of diversity in Madera County, which makes our program unique and special to a certain extent. So we say that that is in our favor when it comes to transportation improvements. Next slide, please. In 1990, or a couple of years before 1990, it was decided that it would benefit us to be a self-help county. A self-help county is a county that taxes itself. There was a small handful of counties at that time that did have a sales tax measure. And in 1990, the voters did approve this half-cent sales tax. It was a 15-year program. During that time, it was anticipated that we would raise approximately 65 million. And it was unknown to us at the time how important being a self-help county was, where we were able to actually leverage additional funds, an additional $50 million in funds was collected in matching funds from state and federal government. So a total of 115 million was collected for the first measure, at which sunset in 2005. And then in 2006, the voters approved by 73% a continuation of the half-cent sales tax, recognizing the need in Madera County. However, this time, we had decided to expand the programs and allocations to cover transit, bicycle pedestrian facilities, road rehabilitation, major highways and streets and roads. And at that time, when we were developing the investment plan, we had determined that we will probably collect approximately 213 million over a 20-year period. So this plan is a 20-year measure. And actually, over the years, we have been able to generate twice that amount of money, as approximately 226 million in matching funds. So it's evident to us that to have this sales tax program in Madera, it has benefited of us to be able to go after other state and federal funding. Next slide, please. In Chachilla, the city of Chachilla, they used a lot of their Measure A and Measure T funds on their local streets and roads, connections, access, bicycle pedestrian facilities, roads near schools. And there's also one regional project that is in the works on State Route 233 interchange improvements. Today with us, as you see, we have staffs from the local agencies. Jason Rogers is from the City of Chachilla. So if we have some questions related to projects in the City of Chachilla, we can certainly request a response from Jason regards to that. In the City of Madera, there are a number of various alley paving projects. There was a undercrossing project, also local streets and roads, safety projects, road rehabilitation, widening of particular roads from two to four lanes. And you can see this also on the map before you. All the maps are included on our website. So if you wanted to visit our website, you can come zoom in and see the listing of some of the projects and locations of them. In the Madera County area, we have broken this out into two separate parts of the map, being eastern and western part of Madera County. And similarly, there are a lot of local street and road rehab type improvements, projects, chip seals, sidewalks, bicycle pedestrian facilities, safety projects that were completed throughout the, right now, we're into the 15 years of the program. So the first 15 years of the program. There are also a number of regional projects in the Madera County area. And that was the State Route 99, Avenue 12 interchange improvement, the Ellis overcrossing on State Route 41. There were some passing lanes. And Fourth Street, I believe, also was a regional project. So there are a number of regional larger access improvements that were completed with the measure funds. In addition, State Route 99, we were able to get our expansion of State Route 99 at least shelf-ready for construction funding from the state of California. So we were able to keep the project alive with a minimum amount of sales tax funding that went towards that project. Next slide, please. So Measure T enables local agencies to fund various different local projects. Local agencies apply for other federal and state funding. And this means that they're able to free up other funding for other projects. So Measure T was able to provide matching funds to address federal and state funding requirements. If Measure T is not renewed, local agencies will be forced to program street and road funds, which is their gas tax funding that they receive, as matching funds on other federal and state grant opportunities. So this would limit the number of projects that would be able to be completed in the Madera County area, because it would have to shift the funding from the gas tax to those particular projects, not having Measure T to add to the number of projects and improvements within the Madera County area. Next slide, please. Next slide. Through the process, we, last year, we decided that we were going to form a steering committee after it was determined that, yes, we need to go out for a renewal of the current measure program. We ought to start, we should start working on that now. And so last year, around August, we formed a steering committee of individuals from the local organizations, business sector, to participate on this steering committee, to kind of listen to where are the needs in the Madera County area? Should we shift our focus? Should, what are, how should we look at the transportation needs in the future? We developed, we had a public outreach process. We had two public opinion polls. And Georgina will get into that a little bit later in the presentation. But what kept surfacing during that, during our discussions, during the public opinion poll, during our mailing, during all of our contacts with the citizens in the community, was fixing our local streets and roads. So it was evident to us that we need to focus heavily on fixing, fixing it first, fixing our local streets and roads. Next slide, please. Why must Measure T fix our roads? Well, this slide's a little interesting, and I'll probably spend a little bit of time on it here, is that over the year, the past couple of years, I'm sure you've heard in the local media, is the state is shifting their focus on transportation, any kind of capacity improving or rehab, adding lane capacity type projects to bicycle pedestrian facilities and transit. So they're moving away from any kind of capacity type projects. And the key here is, we know the needs in the Madera County area are fixing our local streets and roads. But if that funding is going to go away, how are we going to improve our local streets and roads with limited funding available to us? We're not saying that there is not a need for bicycle pedestrian facilities and transit. There certainly is that need, but we also have a need to improve our roads. And we are also seeing a focus in that any kind of funding and grant opportunities out through the federal or state government are mainly focused on this. And so they're discouraging any kind of capacity increasing. At the California level, we have also this past year have seen some of the assemblymen and elected officials also proposing legislation to tap into any kind of transportation funding and requiring transportation agencies to comply with or align to the state goals of reducing vehicle miles traveled. So basically trying to get you out of your cars and onto your transit or look onto your bicycles. And so there is a need that we need to move forward with the measure currently, because those particular legislation, actually, one in particular failed, but may be reintroduced. And so it's very concerning to us. So we would like to see our transportation dollars that we control being utilized here in the Madera County area on the needs where we see fit. Next slide, please. So until ended by voters, you've probably heard that the renewal measure, which Georgina will get more into the specifics of the renewal measure, is that we are proposing, it will be until ended by voters. Now, during the steering committee process, we did do some public opinion polls. And it was determined that there was support for an until ended by voters. And so why is this? And it was determined that this is because there is always going to be a need to have local control, to have, there's always going to be a need for local streets and road repairs. And so we decided, and it was determined, that we will move forward with a measure until ended by voters. However, because it is until ended by voters, it was decided that we would prepare a 30-year plan with the commitment that we would come back every 15 years and take a look at the allocation plan that if approved by the voters, we'll take a look at the allocation plan and ask ourselves, did we get this right? Do we need to make any changes? Do we need to shift into a different mode? Do we need to add a percentage to another area? So we will open it up to the public. We'll go through a public process. We'll begin that in year 14, and in year 15, it will be decided as to whether or not we will make any certain changes. And this is at a minimum of every 15 years. So certainly, if our elected, our authority board requests that we look at it sooner, we always have the option to look at it sooner as well. So it's also important to stress that this is a half-cent sales tax. It's been in existence for 32 years now. It's not an increase in sales tax. It's a continuation of the current sales tax. Next slide, please. And I did touch a little bit on this already, but why we are until ended by voters. Another reason until ended by voters is because it gives our local jurisdictions, our local agencies, and I'm sure they can testify to this, it gives them the ability to plan and to look forward into the future. Look at what projects we have in our future moving forward. They could anticipate if they know the funding is going to be there and get a project shelf-ready for construction. They can go after other federal and state grants, knowing that they would have the funding available to match those grants. And another reason why it's indicated here is that polling indicates until ended by voters. There was strong support for that. When polled on whether or not until ended by voters or a 30-year program, there was only a 1% difference. Next slide, please. When we developed the allocation plan for the renewal effort, we took into consideration various allocation principles. And those are before you hear on this slide. It was local choice, local control. We wanted to make sure that there was some flexibility, definitely fixing our roads, fixing it first. There's funding for all modes, so no neighborhood left behind. Definitely a heavy focus on improving safety and also equity. And with that, I will go ahead and pass this on to Georgina. And she will get into the presentation related to the actual renewal plan that is on the ballot on November 8.
Thanks, Tricia. Whoops. So as Tricia mentioned, there were a number of engagement strategies that were employed over the past year plus to inform the public of what's contained in the plan, to get their input. There were, as Tricia mentioned, there was a steering committee. It had 30-plus members on that committee. They met 13 times between last September and this June. There were two public opinion polls, one in 2021 and one in 2022, in April of 2022. Both showed strong support for the measure renewal. There were stakeholder presentations. There was a community-wide survey. Well over 400 people took that survey. There is also the regional transportation planning process that was going on at the same time. That was really where the transportation needs of the entire county are assessed. And that's where we got our information, primarily to identify what those long-term needs are in Madera County. There were countywide mailers, two different mailers, that were sent out to every household in the entire county. There were virtual meetings and interviews, and there was also social media noticing that was done over time. There will be more public, more opportunity for public engagement as we move forward. The future projects that are important to each of the communities will continue to be identified over time. Each of the communities, each of the jurisdictions will have a capital improvement program process that they have underway every year, which identifies the projects that they will allocate funding and program funding toward. So that's a, that's a public process. So that process is ongoing every year. There's also the biennial Measure T Renewal Strategic Plan Update. So once the, if the measure passes, every two years, there'll be an update looking at what funding is coming in, how it should be allocated to some of those major projects, and the funding that's gone to each of the jurisdictions for each of the different programs. So getting into what are the allocations for this new measure? You'll see that the blue area here is local and neighborhood street maintenance and pothole repair subprogram. That's 35% of the measure. That's the greatest percentage going to maintenance and repairs potholes. With the addition of the community and neighborhood streets and roads program, that's also going to local streets and roads, widening projects, bridge improvements, interchange improvements. Those are, that's about 15%, so about 30% of the measure is going to local streets and roads to improve your local neighborhood and your local community streets and highways. Public transit is about 4%. That's more than double from what it is under the current measure. We have the major routes access and safety improvements, about 25%. Those are the facilities that connect our communities. They connect the unincorporated communities to the cities, the cities of Chachilla and Madera. We've also got about 12.5% of flexible programming. That means that the local agencies will receive 12.5% that is eligible for any transportation purpose. And that really allows for the flexibility. They know what their transportation needs are. So they'll take that 12.5% and allocate it toward maintenance or local streets and roads toward public transit, whatever they believe their need is. We also have clean air and new technologies. That's 3%, again, more than double under the current measure. And then we have safe routes at school and pedestrian and bike safety, again, more than double under the current measure at 4%. Just an overview, I'm not going to delve into these in too much detail, but the local neighborhood street maintenance and pothole repair subprogram, it's about 300 million over 30 years. It's fixed potholes, and the goal is to get the pavement condition index, which is the measurement of how pavement is measured in terms of its quality, from poor to good throughout the entire region. So we're looking at moving it from whatever each of the jurisdictions are now to at least a PCI pavement condition index of 70 to 75 to get into the good category. That means fixing the worst roads and paving dirt roads and shoulders to not only improve mobility, but to also reduce dust and particulate matter and improve air quality. Measure T will continue to be accessible to provide matching funds for the special assessment or special districts out in the entire county region. The local flexibility program, as I mentioned, is about 108 million over 30 years. It can be used for any transportation purpose listed here, including traffic signals, transit, sidewalk repairs, et cetera. The community and neighborhood streets and roads subprograms, about 130 million over 30 years, 15%. Again, that's adding lanes, improving sidewalks, providing for complete streets, which means more than one mode along the corridor, traffic control devices, separating traffic from rail traffic, or grade separation projects and bridge improvements. The Safe Routes to School and Pedestrian and Bike Safety Program, about 35 million. That goes toward safety improvements around schools, providing access improvements for people with disabilities. And again, as Tricia mentioned, this 35 million will really go a long way toward leveraging additional federal and state dollars, since that is where their focus is. And then public transit, the same, about 35 million over 30 years, 4%. Again, looking at funding or leveraging those federal and state dollars, also looking at zero low emission bus conversions, which is a requirement in California, and continuing to provide transit-dependent services. In other words, those people who rely on transit, including students, seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities. The Clean Air and New Technologies Program is 26 million, about 3%. And that is aimed at reducing vehicle miles traveled, providing for clean energy projects, and looking at smart traffic technology to improve traffic flow and reduce congestion and exhaust. Finally, the major routes access and safety improvements program, that's about $217 million over the 30-year period. And again, this is really looking at providing for connectivity between the unincorporated area and the cities and between those unincorporated communities. So there will be interchange modification, congestion relief, managing the corridor. We're not always going to be able to build ourselves out of congestion, but we may be able to manage it better so that traffic flow is smoother. And again, as I just said, improving connections between the cities and the communities. This table provides you with a list of the first 15 years of those major route access and safety improvements. These are major improvements that will be, will be their candidate projects that will be focused on over the first 15 years of the program. And there are projects in each one of the jurisdictions. This is just a map showing the project for the City of Chachilla. It's starting, continuing to look at improvements at State Route 233 and State Route 99 in the City of Chachilla. The City of Madera projects are listed here, again, bridge improvements, widening projects, and other interchange improvements. And then for the county, the Phase 1 county area projects, a number of projects along Avenue 12 to bring that corridor, to improve that corridor for connectivity between the cities and the unincorporated communities, State Route 99 improvements, as well as a fire evacuation route that will be identified as a result from studies that will be conducted or are in the process of being conducted. This table just provides you with a list of all of the various programs and subprograms that are included in the measure, the allocation percentages to each one totaling 100%, the total 30-year Measure T funding that will go to each one of those programs or subprograms for a total of $866 million over the 30-year period. The last three columns show what each of the jurisdictions, local jurisdictions, will receive from the measure over that 30-year period, with the county receiving 49.44%, Madera 41.83%, and Chachilla 8.73%. And this is based on population. So why 2022? Why are we going now when it doesn't expire until 2027? The reason is, there are a number of reasons, but one of the major reasons is that polling was incredibly high. It may not be as good. The economy may not be as good a few years from now. People see the need for transportation improvements in Madera County today. It also allows the Madera County Transportation Authority and Commission to work with local agencies to potentially bond or borrow against those future revenues. If the measure is passed, it may be possible to borrow or bond on those future proceeds and start to begin to get those projects shelf-ready so that when the measure is actually collected, when the measure funds are actually being collected, those projects can get underway immediately. The presidential election in 2024 is likely to be divisive. And we wanted to stay away from that. We wanted to give more attention to the Measure T, to the need for Measure T within the county and educate the public about Measure T. Residents have told us what their number-one priority is, and we don't see that changing. It sticks our roads. And so even if we were to go in 2027, we believe the residents in the county are still going to poll that their number-one priority is fixing the roads. And support in 2024 is unknown. We don't know where the county will be. We don't know if it will pass in 2024 or in 2026, which would be the last opportunity. And if it doesn't pass, then the measure will expire. And then we're looking at getting the voters to approve a measure for a new tax, and that's a lot more difficult. There are some accountability provisions in the measure. There will be annual audits that are prepared by outside professional firms. That's even the case under the current measure. There will also be, this is a new section of this measure, and that's performance measures. We'll be looking at the pavement condition index, see if it is improving as a result of these new Measure T dollars. There will continue to be a Citizens Oversight Committee. They will review the strategic plan, as I mentioned, that it will be updated every two years, as well as the annual audits to determine if there were any issues that should be addressed. Of course, there's always compliance with Public Utilities Code 180,000. That's a requirement of the authority to make sure that everything that is done is in compliance with that, those requirements. And then plan amendments are approved by the authority board under the current Measure T, as well as under the renewal. And then plan amendments are approved by the Authority Board under the current Measure T as well as under the renewal. So there will be accountability there as well. As Tricia mentioned, equity is really important there as goal of getting that countywide pavement condition index up to seventy at least. We will continue to look at low transit fares for senior students and people with disabilities. There will be throughout the entire county, major road and highway projects to provide for connectivity and no neighborhood left behind. And then leveraging those Measure T funding, that, that Measure T funding with maintenance district matching funds, which is what the county currently does and has a policy in place to do. So some of the investment plan highlights, the number one is fix potholes and repair the streets. Another is, we will not increase your taxes. They've been in place. That half-cent sales tax has been in place since nineteen ninety. It will invest eight hundred and sixty-six million dollars plus whatever we can leverage into the local economy. And with that, all of us are here to answer any questions that you might have. Troy, are there any questions? Any hands raised?
Yeah, there are no hands raised at the moment, and there have been no questions on Facebook. But I do want to ask some questions to to our local agency staff. So basically, if we didn't have Measure T, what does that mean for planning and implementation of future transportation projects in your jurisdiction? And how has Measure T benefited your jurisdiction and how could it benefit for the future? And so if I could ask those questions to our local agency staff and they can specifically highlight how, how the answers to those questions for their jurisdictions. I'll pick on Jared first, Jared Carter from our Public Works Department at the county. Jared, do you need me to repeat those questions or?
No, thank, thanks Troy, appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. Yeah, they're great questions in the sense of, you know, maintaining the county's network. So the county, the unincorporated area of the county, we have about fifteen hundred miles of road that we are responsible for maintaining. When we add in our maintenance districts and our special districts, that takes it a little over two thousand miles. So we have a pretty big chunk of roadway to take care of. And, you know, primarily, the revenue source, as it was mentioned in, in the presentation, is our regular gas tax that we get through the state. Which in the case of, you know, this, this fiscal year, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, our gas tax revenue estimated about six point seven million dollars. Now, we, we did conduct a pavement condition survey and pavement analysis back in two thousand nineteen. And from that, basically determined and learned that our pavement condition index that Georgina mentioned earlier is about a forty-four, which is pretty, pretty severe, severe condition overall. The, I think the statewide average is about sixty-five, so we're, we're down there in the bottom of the counties when it comes to payment conditions. And in that, in that report, it also identified essentially a couple scenarios of, of what it would take to get our payment condition higher. And so, as Georgina mentioned, one of the, you know, one of the goals is that we're trying to implement the strategies through our payment management program to increase that payment condition index. But that takes revenue, and with the, you know, regular gas tax funding that we get each year, it's not near enough to even make a dent or make an improvement in that payment condition. In fact, the report that we conducted showed that if we stayed at that, our payment condition would actually be around a thirty by the year twenty-twenty-eight, so it would decline significantly. What it did also identify is that with roughly twenty-two million dollars a year, we can increase our PCI to about fifty-five. And so when you take our six point seven million of gas tax and you add that together with the Measure T revenue that we're, we're getting, which was shown in the chart there. And then those other sources that we talked about leveraging like SB one and also some of our local transportation fund. You get us to about, right around twenty million dollars a year. Right? Which is what we need to actually make improvement to our payment condition index. So, so, you know, I guess that's a long way of answering your question, Troy, is our payment condition and our roads will get, continue to get worse and worse and worse because without Measure T and having Measure T as a source, but also having that as a source to, or a fund to be able to leverage other funding that we're able to bring in and help towards that. It's a significant help to that process and taking us in the, in the direction going up with our payment condition versus continuing to go down. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thanks, Jared. No, I appreciate it. We'll turn some time over to Ellen Bitter with the City Engineering, City Madera Engineering Department. City Madera obviously has a little bit different needs and, and issues and challenges versus the county as a whole. How has Measure T benefited the city of Madera and what if we didn't have it? What would be, you know, the challenges?
Thank you, Troy. I always like it when I follow Jared because he gives a very detailed explanation of where we stand. And I would say the impact has been similar for the city of Madera proportionately. Obviously, we don't have as many road miles as the county and our budgets are a bit different. But proportionally, it's had as great an impact in being able to deliver our program and being able to address our pavement condition. Fortunately, we're in a little better shape here in the city, in the urban environment. Our pavement condition rating is around, averaging around sixty-five, sixty-eight, somewhere in there. So we don't have as steep a hill to climb. But what having Measure T does is allow us to address the maintenance needs so that we keep our pavements in good condition and don't see them going down over the years. One thing I might add is that having a local sales tax, you know, controlled by the local entities, gives us a lot of flexibility. We, and there are a few key programs. I, I like to report that Measure T helped fill in the gaps in the funding that was needed for the Fresno River Trail project that we did. It's, it was key in that multimodal aspect. And without Measure T, we wouldn't have been able to finish that project, even though it was mostly grant funded. It, it's very versatile if priorities have to change because things are changing in growth or what the demands are or emergency situations. You know, there's a lot of storm damage that causes damage to our streets. We can, you know, fairly quickly, working with our city council authority, find the funding to address those needs as well in an emergency situation.
All right. Thanks, Ellen. Thanks for sharing the city of Madera's perspective. Well, now I'll turn the time over to Jason Rogers, the Public Works Director for the city of Chautauqua. City Chautauqua, as a, as a smaller city, has unique challenges as well. And how has Measure T helped the city of Chautauqua?
Yes, thank you, Troy. And I'd just like to say that I like to follow Jared and Ellen because they both cover and we're, we're sort of similar to Madera in the fact that we don't have as much roadways. We have about sixty-five miles. And our PCI is about sixty-five as well. So we're at about the state average. That can be improved and funds like Measure T does help do this. Honestly, since the start of Measure T, though, the city of Chautauqua is able to leverage and bring in millions of dollars of state and federal money that we likely would not have otherwise received. As a result, we've been able to focus your improvements to our infrastructure. But the work isn't done. And if we didn't have that funding, we wouldn't be able to do projects like when we recently completed last year, Road sixteen reconstruction. We heard that the county was doing their portion of it, the county portion outside of city limits. We were able to team up with the county and, and put funding towards that project so that way we could do the, the whole length of the road from city through the, the county. And without having those funds available, it's most likely that we wouldn't have been able to do that. So it's important that we're, we have these funds available for projects that show up like that or for leveraging state and federal dollars. Otherwise, we have to go into stuff like general fund and fight for it with other services that the general fund does provide.
Thank you, Jason. I, I've noticed that the city of Chautauqua is also used a lot for around the schools, you know, fixing the roads and sidewalks around schools. Is that something, do you think, will continue for the city of Chautauqua with Measure T dollars in the future?
Yes, right now, we're currently working on a large street improvement project, the Humble Street Improvement Project. And we're doing it as a complete street, so not only are we doing the road, we're also doing drainage improvements. And then we're doing sidewalk infill where necessary, so that way we can have safe routes to school for our kids. And previous years, we focused on around the middle school and between two of the elementary schools to provide better roads and better pedestrian facilities for, for our children.
All right. Thanks, Jason. I, I'd like now to maybe turn the time over to Supervisor Poiters or Supervisor Rogers from your guys' perspective. How do you see Measure T working and how has it benefited your, your district or your constituents?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rob. Well, I'll just talk about MD twenty-one as an example. One of our maintenance districts in the county has sixty miles of roads. That's the country club acres, Highlands. That region over there northeast of the city and of the city of Madera. And that region, we've paved over thirty-three miles of roads in the last twelve years. We did it by matching the very small tax increment taken from the property tax and used Measure T to match that, and we were able to accomplish that thirty-three miles of the sixty miles of roads. That wouldn't have happened without Measure T. It just would not have occurred. Also, we spent forty-three million dollars this last fiscal year in District Two paving roads like Avenue twenty-six out to Eastman Lake. And that was a flat project, a federal lands access project that we were able to match with Measure T and utilize those, the federal dollars to complete the project from the city of Chautauqua all the way out to Eastman Lake. And that was one of the worst roads in the county. That, and that, that's a great project. We're doing that consistently with, with other, other roads in the area. The eighteen and a half, I believe Jared can probably give me more specific information on where we've utilized that Measure T money. But my point is that these, these projects mean a lot to the residents of those areas. They mean a lot to the residents of Madera County. And with Measure T, we, we're not only collecting sales tax from residents of the county, but those who pass through the county and buy things in this county as well. There's a lot of visitors that, that pass through this county on their way to Yosemite. That, that tourism dollar that gets spent in our county generates sales tax that we get that half cent that goes towards Measure T. So that is really a beneficial thing for all of us as we, as we look at how it, it's changed the picture of our roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Poiters?
Yes, thank you, Troy, and thank you for the great questions and also for coordinating the Zoom and Facebook Live. I don't think it can be overemphasized the, the need or the, the benefit of, of Measure T in light of the, I, I guess what's happening in Sacramento in terms of more and more control from our legislators in terms of, of where the transportation dollars should be going. And I, with Measure T, we have more control in terms of our own destiny in terms of, of our traffic patterns, our roads, where we want those dollars to go. So it's a, and the ability to leverage those state and, and federal funds without going into general fund dollars and, and other dollars available. So that, that's one of the big things is, is we get a, a big return on a small investment, but also determine our own destiny in terms of transportation.
Thank you, Supervisor. Are there any other comments or any additional things, comments anyone wants to make?
I'll, I'll just take a quick second and add a couple things in. You know, one of the things that I would say is that, you know, when we talk about the timing of things, you know, it's, it's pretty critical because of the fact that a lot of these projects and things take years to get into construction and design and going through environmental. It's really important that we have the ability to plan ahead and, and, you know, develop these programs and put them in place and know that we're going to be able to move forward with them. And, you know, that can't be done unless we know that we have some funding sources that are available to do that. We can make long lists of projects that we want to do, but without knowing that there's funding there to get that done, they're just lists of projects. They're not anything that we can really move forward. So, so that's really important. And, you know, there was mention of bonding and being able to borrow ahead, which is, you know, a huge advantage, especially in, in the way things are now because of costs and things that are going up pretty, pretty significantly. You know, being able to do things now and move forward with them sooner rather than waiting is actually, you know, potential, you know, significant savings on the cost of those projects. And then also, you know, just the investment in the network itself. You know, as, as the payment conditions get better and we're moving from a, you know, rehab and reconstruction type project to pavement preservation, the cost goes down significantly as well. In, in a rehab or reconstruction, you're looking at, you know, fifty to sixty dollars a square yard in cost for that versus a pavement preservation, which is a seal or some type of lighter treatment to preserve that road once it's in a good condition, which is, you know, anywhere from three to five dollars a square yard. So a significant, you know, savings in the cost of maintaining the network. So that, that just results in more money that can be available in the future as our payment conditions get better. We will have more money freed up to do more improvements and more projects. And so it really is an investment into future funding and future ability to do more for the network. So just wanted to add a few, few comments on that.
And if I can add to that, I mean, city of Chautauqua, we, we have a CIP program. We go out about five years on our CIP program, so we're, we're looking at projects down the road. And right now, the way that we set it up is, we set it up with the anticipation that we'll be there. If Measure T goes away, then we're going to have to start looking at those projects and either taking projects off or moving them further out in order to get those done. So it's really imperative that this measure continues. That way, we can keep our CIPs intact and, and get these projects completed as needed.
Okay. Great. I do have a couple of Facebook questions, Supervisor Poiters. That, that did, that did come in. And this is for, for anyone that wants to answer. Are the plans being laid out banking on us receiving a certain amount of matching funds? Or is our plan put together with the assumption we will not receive any matching funds? Georgina, I think you're on mute. There you go.
In the assumption for the fifteen years worth of projects, there were assumptions about other funding being available. Not so much federal and state funding, but road impact fee or traffic mitigation fee funding. We are hoping that there will be additional federal and state dollars that will be available for those projects. But right now, the majority of those other funding sources that will help fund those Measure T projects that are listed. most of that's coming from traffic impact fees or the, the regional traffic mitigation fee program that the county is currently updating. Jared, did you want to add anything to that or Ellen, Jason, Tricia?
I might add that some of our subprograms for the advanced technology nation. We know that there's a lot of money coming down from federal and state governments for those programs. And so we, if Measure T passes, we are set up to have, to provide the matching funds that then will leverage a lot more dollars for those programs as well.
And that would be the case with the bikes and pedestrians as well as transit.
Okay. Here's another question. Do we have a guess about how much of our Measure T funds are funded by local residents versus people coming in for work, traveling through, or generic outsider? I know that something Supervisor Rogers mentioned that is one benefit. It's hard to specifically answer that question in the sense of our, our guess is anywhere from twenty to twenty to forty percent. It just depends on probably the time of the year and how many people are driving through. We have a lot of visitors up in Yosemite that will visit the National Park. But just rough calculations, I think I'm pretty comfortable with the numbers saying that up to at least twenty percent are from our interregional travelers or tourists or visitors to our county. Which, which is, which is awesome. I do have one more question. Couple more questions. Does our budget or planned Measure T fund assume a certain level of economic growth with the city-county planning to bring in businesses for tax revenue? You want me to answer that? You're, do you want to get stabbed, Georgina?
No, you go ahead, Troy. I think you're the expert there. You and Tricia.
But I, I obviously I'm not involved in the city and the county planning for bringing in businesses. But from a forecasting our, our revenue, there is some assumptions. So we look at historical data of what we have brought in over the thirty-year history of the measure and we can do a, a, a pretty good estimate and forecast of what the future could, could be based upon that. And so, yeah, there is some accounting of new businesses, new grow from, from economic growth. So, so, yeah, that is a part of our, our estimates.
I'd like to add to that, Troy, and that would be that from the county side, we look at that very conservatively. Because if you overemphasize the, the, the guess, as it were, and it is, it's an educated guess. If you overemphasize the guess, you've made a big mistake and, and it's hard to rectify.
Yeah, for sure. Here's one more question. Would Measure T help to build electric vehicle infrastructure for charging as well?
Yes, the funding that's been set aside in the clean and new technologies program can be used for charging stations. It will be allocated to each of the three jurisdictions and they'll be able to allocate it to projects that will benefit their, their constituents, the residents and businesses within their communities. And so, oh, you know, the, the conversion to electric or hybrid vehicles is just growing. And so there will be a continued need and even greater need to have those charging stations available throughout the entire county.
And I would, I would probably expect a pitcher to say that as that conversion happens, there's going to be more and more funding made available from the state level for that type of work. So again, having Measure T available to leverage that funding is going to be a pretty big advantage for us.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all the questions that we have from Facebook and from other sources. And so I'll turn it back over to Supervisor Poiters if you want to have any closing remarks or?
Very good. Thank you, Troy. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our panelists. I'd like to thank Tricia and Troy from MCTC. Great presentation and, and fielding questions there. Georgina, wonderful, another great presentation. And, and the staff from our jurisdictions, Ellen, Jared, Jason. Thank you so much and Supervisor Rogers for your insight in terms of the, the benefits. And, and also those of you who have joined us this evening, thank you so much. And this will be available. This is being recorded, and so we will have it available and make and, and advertise it so people can be informed about Measure T at their convenience with the help of this recording. So again, thank you so much and everybody have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Great job.